I call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, December 11, 2017, at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda that we have a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Agenda is approved as presented. Next is the invocation, Councilmember Douglas.
Dear Lord, please bless this council and give us the knowledge we need to do an excellent job of doing the right things for everyone in our county. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Douglas. Next is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, November 27, 2017.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, November 27, 2017, as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Regular meeting minutes from November 27, 2017 are approved. Public presentations, we have none. Ms. Davis, first public comment session.
We have one to speak tonight, Mr. Jeff Morris, speaking on the hospital agreement.
I rise because I have some concerns about the quality of the agreement that the council has reached with Providence Hospital. My concern is that this council has certainly raised publicly and privately concerns about the operation of Fairfield Memorial Hospital for quite some time. Concerns that we're putting good money after bad, that sort of thing. The hospital continued to operate at a deficit, so forth. We now enter into a new agreement where the council says to the new enterprise, here's $10 million. Not only that, we'll give you $4 million upfront, even though none of that $4 million, well, that's what the ESCRO agreement says. It's a 25-page agreement, I've read carefully. You get $4 million upfront, it can be drawn down up to $1 million a year, but the $4 million's there right away. That amount has to stay at $4 million for the first six years of the agreement, all for the benefit of the new enterprise. And that's okay, I understand why they might want to do that. What troubles me is there's nothing in that agreement that seems to require this new enterprise to provide any real reporting or meeting of financial benchmarks. So we could be looking at another situation in which there's a continuing loss, and the county is unable, under the agreement, to say, look, we're not going to put any more money in here, even though we know you're not making any money. In fact, we know you're losing money. Certainly, the incentive arguably economically is to just operate it as long as they lose only $1 million a year, because then the county's money can go ahead and make up that deficit. That's all well and good, but the problem is that there's no reporting requirement even. There's nothing that sets a standard that says, look, you can't lose more than this. I heard many people in the council say, oh, the problem is we've got too many people over there at that hospital making too much money, a lot of administrators and so forth. Nothing in this agreement limits that, not one thing. All of those decisions are left entirely in the hands of the other enterprise. Now, it seems to me you are putting yourself potentially in the position that you said was unacceptable before. It may be that this will work out great, and I certainly hope that it does. To the extent that we can have healthcare available for members, for people in the county, all the better. I just wish that the council had been a little more careful about looking at potential problems and creating ways in which to limit further exposure. Certainly, under the agreement, if the council fails to fund this properly, they can just knock down their ad valorem tax payment. And that doesn't, that makes sense to me. But I don't see anything the other way. The only limit on, or protection, is buying this thing at a fair market value, that ain't going to work. So, I hope you really look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
That concludes segment one.
All right, we are now down to item seven on the agenda, public hearing. We have one for tonight. That is to authorize Fairfield County to purchase and development approximately 336 acres of real property, tax map number 057-00-00-003, part, tax map number 041-00-00-042, tax map number 041-00-00-023, to be used for economic development purposes or projects and other related matters. Note, public hearing amended from original advertisement, which stated total acreage at 508. We'll open this public hearing now at 6:05 PM, December 11, 2017. Ms. Davis, did anyone sign to speak?
We have one speaker.
All right.
Ms. Yvette Howard.
Ordinance number 683, authorizing Fairfield County to purchase and develop 336 acres of real property to be used for economic development projects and other related matters is a good idea. Hopefully, you'll be able to work out an agreement with the seller of the 172-acre site. Access and easement regarding this property must be legally enforceable. We want to see this county grow and provide jobs and a better standard of living for our citizens. Since there are some additional funding sources and existing infrastructure, there will be multiple opportunities to attract a company. While the businesses in this county might overlap, the public needs to be aware that there are no undue influences from associated businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now close this public hearing at 6:06 PM. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, now close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed by a vote of seven to zero at 6:06 PM. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Third and final reading on ordinance number 689, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 404, and subsequently ordinance number 529, to reduce the number of members on the Fairfield County Council on Aging Board from nine members to seven members. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to provide third and final reading on ordinance number 689. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. The ordinance is approved. Board and commission minutes, we have two tonight, and we'll do these together unless anybody has questions or comments on specific minutes from either of the two. Library commission and hospital board, do we have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Minutes are approved. We're now down to board and commission appointments. One item for tonight, disability and special needs board appointment, I think it's a reappointment of Ms. Shirley Green from District Two. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appoint Shirley Green from District Two to disabilities and special needs board. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, Ms. Shirley Green has now been put on the disability and special needs board. Eleven, old business, we have none. New business, ESCRO agreement in support of Providence Emergency Center. Mr. Taylor, if you would, please take that one away for us.
Yes, as part of the agreement, the transformation agreement that we have with Providence, we do have to enter into an ESCRO agreement to set aside the monies to fund this particular arrangement. We have gotten quotes from four different groups, BBNT, Chicago Title, Regions Bank, and US Bank, and we're recommending to council that we move forward with BBNT to do the ESCRO arrangement. That was, as far as cost, the cheapest, and as far as other requirements, had the least requirements that we have to meet. That's really $1,000 per year, and we get to keep all of any interest income based on the ESCRO agreement.
All right, and I think this is part of the agreement that we already have in place, so I don't think there's any action for council to take unless somebody else thinks there's done.
No action is needed based on our legal advice, it's just for information that we're moving forward with BBNT, and the agreement is complete.
All right, thank you very much. Now, it's your report.
First item we have tonight is Mr. Randy Roberts from our tax assessor. We're going to have him give a report to council on the tax assessor's office and answer any questions that council may have.
To the new faces that don't know me, I'm Randy Roberts, I'm the Fairfield County Assessor. Hope everyone's doing well tonight, appreciate the opportunity to come out and speak to you about our department. First of all, I thought I would talk about the functions of the assessor's office. Our basic function is to value all the land and improvements in the county that are within our jurisdiction. There are properties that are in our county that are valued by a tax commission because it's under their jurisdiction and they do most of the manufacturing, so I just wanted to point that out as well. Even though we are taxed with value in all the land and the improvements, Department of Revenue also has a hand in value some of the improvements in our county. We process applications for exemptions. The two main applications of exemptions we receive are the legal residence and agricultural use, and we also process exemptions that are approved by the Department of Revenue that notify us about a property if it's exempt, and then we apply the exemption as well. We process all the deed transfers, and we put those typically in two categories. One would be splits, where a portion of a land is selling, and those are worked by the GIS manager who will go in there and divide up the land based on the legal description that tells him what is being sold, and of course, what's being retained will stay in the previous owner's name. And then we also have straight transfers, which are basically you're selling the entire property, then we'll just update our ownership records to show the transfer. We process all the permits for new construction, like I said earlier, within our jurisdiction. Also, some of those go to Department of Revenue. VC Summers, one of those places or things that we send over to Department of Revenue because that's under their jurisdiction, so any permit that we receive that pertains to their property will afford on to Department of Revenue. We maintain and update all the GIS layers with all the new divisions, and that basically is talking about parcel layer, fire districts, and council districts, or anything that changes, we will update those as well. We print maps for the public and other county departments as needed. We enter information for the auditor's office to generate rollback taxes, and we enter that into their AS400, and then they'll generate a bill based on the change in use. We do tax estimates for real estate closings. Somebody calls in and say, hey, we got a closing, can you give me an estimate based on this value, based on these exemptions, or based on not having these exemptions? And then we'll run those estimates and send them over to the closing attorney. We also issue mobile home moving permits, so if somebody wants to move a mobile home within the county, they come to our department. We help them research and make sure all the taxes are paid, issue the permit, and then allow them to move it. And functions continued, we also sell GIS data and CAMA data. Somebody's working on a project and they need our data, we'll be glad to sell it to them. They have to do a license agreement with the county, and it's approved by myself and Mr. Taylor, and then they're either charged a fee or not charged a fee based on something related to county business or something that's for private business. We provide information to the public for its taxpayers, abstracters, appraisers, attorneys, surveyors, mortgage companies, and realtors. They all use our website. Most of the times, they find it very useful, and they like enjoying the site, looking at the different values and information that we have on there. We provide other information to other county departments, code enforcement, auditor's office, treasurer, tax collector, E911, fire services, administration, and economic development. We didn't have listed on there among some of the other departments. We maintain and update our CAMA software, which is the software that we use to do the evaluation of the land and the improvements. We process appeals. This usually requires a visit to the property, but not all the time. But we need to go out there and look at the property and see what the problem is, if it's deferred maintenance, or whatever the taxpayer thinks is the problem. We'll go out there and look at it and confirm that there is an issue. If there's an issue, we're more than happy to make an adjustment and work with them on that issue and adjust the value if needed. Damage assessment team, we have three appraisers, and we are all on the damage assessment team. In case there's a natural disaster, we'll go out there and look at the properties and see what amount of damage is done, and assess that, and turn it into FEMA. And then every five years, we have to do our countywide reassessment. Our next implementation is 2020, and that is based on sales from January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2019. And the legal authority that we operate under is Title 12 of the South Carolina Code of Law, and we also operate under the 117 Code of Regulations. 1237-90 is the assessor's duties and responsibilities. 1237-50 is reassessment. 1243-220 is legal residence and agricultural exemption. Code of Regulation 117, 1720.2 is for general requirements for ratio study, and every five years, we do our reassessment program. It has to be submitted to Department of Revenue for approval. And then we have the Code of Regulation 1740.2 is cadastral mapping and parcel identifiers, which is based on the numbering system and how we divide up the properties when we do splits. And those are just a few examples, and below is a web address if you would like to research this information further. And there's different departments that we have to comply with, other than just administration. We do have to comply with Department of Revenue. Like I said earlier, they approve our reassessment program, they audit our records, they can any time, and they provide updates to us as far as the legislative changes that are coming down, down the pipe, so to speak, and Department of Revenue values all the manufacturing properties in Fairfield County as well. And then the South Carolina Department of Labor, Licensing and Regulations, which is short version is LLR, they track our continuing education, and they, of course, take payment for our license renewal. And then we also have the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice called USEPAP, which we operate under Standard Six for Mass Appraisal. The employees of the assessor office is Jeff Bruiton, he has 11 years, he's the GIS manager, he's also certified residential mass appraiser. Gary Hensley, he's the deputy assessor, he has eight years' experience, certified residential mass appraiser as well. Jessica Alfred, administrative assistant, she has four years of experience. Of course, I have 27 years of experience in county government, I worked at Richland County, excuse me, Lexington County, Kershaw County, and Fairfield County, and I have a certified general mass appraiser license. Now, I kind of went through that pretty quickly, just a snapshot of what we do. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight, and I have my contact information here if anybody has any questions, and does anybody have any questions for me?
I do.
Paulie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for being here. Can you explain the process of back taxes?
Rollback taxes?
Rollback taxes?
Yes, sir. If you're receiving the agricultural exemption, let's say you have 20 acres, and you pulled out one acre to build a home, we would roll back on that one acre for five years, appraise it in the market value versus the agricultural value.
Now, is that like a state law that has to be done?
Yes, sir. I wouldn't do it any otherwise, because it's just really too much aggravation sometimes, but yes, that is a requirement that you have to do that, yes, sir.
Mr. Douglas?
Property taxes 15%. Who decides if the raise is needed?
Well, we look at it, and we look at the sales, and we see if it warrants an adjustment, you know.
Is it done every five years regardless? I mean, it seems like every five years it's raised 15% regardless.
Not necessarily. We'll look at the sales, you know, and we look at the properties, the improved properties. We go out there and look at them. If there's some deferred maintenance and they're not taking care of the homes well, we probably give it a little more depreciation. But of course, if there's sales that show the value is higher than what we have, we can adjust it to the market value, but it's only going to be capped at 15% increase. And that's per second one.
I understand the assessor's office changed the method of assessing new construction mid-year of 2015. The old method of assessing new construction would assess a newly constructed home anywhere from 38% to 75% of the cost of new construction. In 2015, after some research, there were still newly constructed homes being assessed by the old method, and later in 2015, newly constructed homes were being assessed at anywhere from 95% to 100% of their construction cost. When exactly did the change of assessment take place?
We did change the process, and I probably have to look at my records, because right now, I'm kind of drawing a blank, but we did change the process because when we were looking at the new construction, and we were looking at the permit prices, they were way, there was a big difference between the value and the cost to construct it. So we started looking at that valuation and the process of how we put it on, and we did change it, yes, sir, we did. And I can give you the exact years, but I'd have to look at my records.
All right, well, I look forward to finding out from you. Where in the state statute does it state that change of assessment practices can take place mid-year and not during a reassessment year?
You can change a process anytime you deem necessary, because ultimately, it's up to the assessor's office or to the assessor to make those changes. And I started working here in February 2013, and I did make that change, but that has been discussed with Sandy Howitt, Department of Revenue, and he did not see a problem with anything that we were doing, and he's kind of the overseer of how we handle our duties, and I ran it by him and asked him if he'd see a problem with it, and he did not.
Who, if the county, would discuss this practice of changing assessed values?
Who would I discuss it with?
Yeah, the administrator. Have you talked to him about?
We have discussed it, yes, sir, we have.
Okay, well, where in the state statute does it state that a change of assessment practice can take place mid-year and not during a reassessment year?
Well, the law does state that you're supposed to put the property on for its true fair market value, in the case in which it was for sale on the open market, where there's no duress, and that the owner, as far as the seller and the buyer, add it in their best interest. So that basically states that we're supposed to put it on for its true fair market value, and that's why we adjusted our process, because I think we weren't putting it on for true fair market value.
I know in an old house, when you measure it from outside dimensions, that's the way you get your assessment, right?
We do, because most people don't invite us inside, and we have to make assumptions, you know. We're out there, we're measuring up the house, and you can imagine, we're kind of in a disadvantage, a lot of people don't want us to come inside, don't want to see how nice it is or how bad it is, because there's some cases, we go look at people's houses, and they're in pretty bad shape, and those people are more than welcome to let us in and look at it than the people that have the granite and the nice crown molding and different things. They may not want us to look at it, see what kind of quality of construction it is, because that will affect the value. So, I'm just being honest with you, and we do the best we can from the information that we have, and we do have to measure it from the outside. We would love to go on inside, but we don't always get that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments for council members? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Roberts.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have the 2017 CDVG Needs Assessment Report. Laura, if you'd like to come up. In years past, Stephen Gaither, I'm sure you're all familiar with, has done this report, but he's no longer with us as our grants writer, so tonight, Laura and I will be presenting this. And essentially, what the needs assessment is, is each year to qualify for community development block grants, and that's kind of the bread and butter of grants that the state offers to counties and municipalities. You have to take it before council, you have to go before the public to see what they feel the priorities are for improving, in this case Fairfield County. They have several categories, and these are the categories essentially that we need to rank to determine what we feel is most important for Fairfield County. And you can rank things outside of this, but CDVG doesn't cover things outside of what I'm going to list here, so if you list them, you're not going to get CDVG money for them. But the categories are community infrastructure, and that's where most of the money is for CDVG. They have $10 million a year available in community infrastructure, and that is exactly what it sounds like it is. It's roads, it's water, it's sewer, those kind of things. Then you have community enrichment. That one has $3 million in it. That's for things such as libraries and fire stations, buildings, that would improve the community. And you can get up to $500,000 for community enrichment, and back to community infrastructure, you can get up to $750,000. And then you have a third category, neighborhood revitalization. That one only has $1.2 million in it, and you can get up to $500,000. That one's highly competitive, because there's so little money in that particular CDVG category. But again, that's for, again, as it sounds, revitalizing older neighborhoods and getting rid of blight to improve the living conditions of the neighborhood. And then you have one fourth category, which has very little money in it, it's called special projects. That's something, if you've got an immediate need and you have all the engineering, all the site work done, but you just need some gap financing to finish the project, that one is rare that people apply for that one. But anyway, those are the three, community infrastructure, community enrichment, and neighborhood revitalization. Those are the primary ones that council needs to vote to determine what the priority is. And Laura, as part of this, again, we do have to reach out to the community, and Laura's got the report, where we've reached out to the community and what the surveys say from the public.
Good evening, council. I'm going to do a recap of the 2017 needs survey. Some of the places that the surveys were available includes Fairfield Behavior Health Services, Council on Aging, Disabilities and Special Needs, the Administration Building, and other county buildings. Also, it was advertised via handbills on the counter and pizza boxes at a local restaurant, announces at churches and other local organizations, local cable network, and flyers mailed to The survey covers 15 areas of potential concerns or potential needs, and for each of the 15 questions, there were other questions, 15 areas, there were between 11 and 21 questions that the surveyor had to answer. So the person completing the survey had to rank at least 11 of the 15 questions as no need, low need, moderate need, or critical need. Forty-two surveys were completed and returned. Most surveys were in the following areas and were considered critical needs. Job creation and job training, water, emergency medical services, healthcare, and police services. Those were classified by all 42 as the top five as considered critical needs. That's it.
And at the next council meeting, we will again have this on the agenda and ask council to vote to rank what they feel the most urgent needs are for the county.
All right. I think that's everything in your report. Dan, Mr. Roof, do you have something?
Yeah, can I ask, you said there were only 42?
Yeah, we used the survey monkey.
They must all come from District One. No. I know I had a lot of people ask for those, and I gave out a lot of them. I was just surprised that it was that low a number.
Yeah, yes, sir. District One did have a lot.
I'm just, 42 was all that was turned in?
Okay.
And it's completely voluntary, so, you know, we can hand out a lot, but it's still up to the person to get them turned back in, to complete them and turn back in. And even out of the 42, there were some questions that were skipped.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Johnson, now down to clerk of council, report, Ms. Davis.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder that the intergovernmental meeting hosted by Town of Windsboro will be held this Wednesday, December 13, 6:30 PM, at the Windsboro Women's Club building.
Thank you very much. We're now down to second public comment session.
We have two speakers tonight. First, Mr. Jeff Morris, speaking on council for council.
Thank you. These are further remarks, in a sense, but my concern, again, about the hospital agreement is that it seems that the county hasn't taken the opportunity to protect its own interests sufficiently. The only thing the county can do if the hospital says, we're shutting down, is buy it. That's it. And when the county buys it, it doesn't even get any credit for the money it's already paid in, as an example. So it struck me as odd that it wouldn't say, gee, as an example, let's say they run for eight years, and the county has given $8 million to this operation, and they say, we're done. They have to give you 90 days, 60 days' notice, excuse me, you've got to come up with a fair market value in 45 days, which I'm not sure you even do, and then you've got to complete the deal within another 15 days. Very unlikely, but at least in theory, the county could protect its interest. One would expect there would at least be some recognition of the county's contribution along the way, but instead, we could give this operation $8 million in that example, they could buy a bunch of stuff, it could be sold off to other parts of their business, and then they say, well, we're going to close. Now, the county, to protect its earlier investment, could go in and try to rebuy this thing, that's a right it has under the agreement, but it wouldn't even get credit for all the money that it put in. Now, I don't know if that could work or not. I don't know what kind of advice the council got in the course of these negotiations. My assumption is, if you walk in the room and you've got $10 million bucks, you've got some ability to have some impact on the way that agreement is written. It doesn't seem like that interest was very well protected, from what I can see. It may have been I wasn't in the negotiations. But I'd urge you to think about what kinds of representation you're getting. If these kinds of issues and potential protections to be built into the agreement were not considered, proposed, drafted, all of those kinds of things. It seems to me that if they weren't, then you ought to be looking at separate other council, because you may not be getting what you're paying for. We've already spent a lot of money on this, and I understand the urge to maintain a hospital in the county. I don't even know where this is going to be located and how valuable it's going to be to people who live in outer ranges of the county, but for what we're paying, $1 million a year, you could have an Uber take any sick person you want to the hospital and back. It would be probably less than $100 a ride, and that's 12,500 rides to the hospital every year. I don't think that's much of a solution. I'm just pointing out the fact that you've got a lot of money going in and no protection for any failure. It's all one-sided for the benefit of Providence Hospital. Thank you, and Merry Christmas. Thanks.
Next, Ms. Yvette Howard on transparency.
Good evening again. I'm happy to see that more due diligence is warranted on ordinance number 690. The ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to purchase 14 acres of land located for a fire station. According to Mr. Randy Roberts, information provided by Mr. Randy Roberts, the average acreage for a fire station in Fairfield County is two acres. So how will the additional 12 acres be used? While the idea is good, there are several challenges getting clear title to the 14-acre property since there are tax encumbrances. The effect of an additional fire station will have on the volunteer capacity of the Dutchman Creek Fire Station volunteers are two of the challenges. I expect that these challenges will be dealt with before this ordinance is amended, amended, and reintroduced. Thanks again.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Davis. We're now down to council time. Any council members? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I wanted to find out, and I've already, I think I mentioned this to chairman a couple days ago, talking about the fire department. And I don't know that we've got a clear answer on this. What happened to the two acres that was supposedly donated by the Presbyterian Church several months ago?
Mr. Taylor, can you give us information on that, please?
We're still looking into it. They have not donated it as of the date, but we will probably revisit that, giving the issues with the 14 acres that we were looking at.
Right, okay. Yeah.
The church was going to donate 2.17 acres, and I have a meeting with the lady that's going to give it to the county after January 6th. She's on vacation and be back on January 6th, and we're going to accept the property for the fire station there.
Okay, if I can finish. I don't understand why we jumped ahead from the donated, just donated two acres to pursuing the 14 acres. I don't understand why we even went that route when we had enough land to build it to start with if we would just wait.
We didn't have it. When I first went to the church and asked for the acreage for the property, the congregation voted to let me have it. But when it was sent to the presbytery, they took about two months to get back to the church, and I was trying to find a place to put the fire station if this particular piece of property wouldn't be gifted to us. And we did find a place, but the Crescent put in the deeds and stuff that they sold the property to this partnership, and put in there nothing but residential use. So that more or less killed the 14 acres. At first, I was going to get two acres from the partnership for the fire station, but they offered to give the 14 acres for a rollback taxes that they owed on the properties. And it'd been awash, and it'd been free, more or less. Now, like I said, I'll be getting back with the church as soon as the lady that's over it gets back to me on January 6th and have a discussion with her, and I'm going to bring it up to talk to Mr. Taylor at the same time.
Okay. Yeah, I just think we need to be patient on this a little bit, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. Anyone else?
As far as the $1 million a year for the emergency room, and we're not getting anything out of it, this is not an investment to make money. The Fairfield County Council has supported the emergency room probably since it's been in existence. We've, most of the time, we'd let the emergency room have more than $1 million a year. And they are asking for $1 million a year to support this new emergency room, but it's no, we're not paying any more to have the new emergency room. So it won't cost anything to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Goins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I just want to say again to remind the community that there will be a community meeting on the 16th of this month, which is Saturday, coming from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Recreation Center in District 4 on Highway 215. And anyone from any area is welcome to come, and we, the council team has invited all the council team, those that can make it. So we'd like to come out, and we just do some table talk and just go over some things of interest that in the community. And also, I'd like to say, this being our last meeting for this year, I want to say I thank God for the opportunity of the journey so far, that He's allowed me with this team and with the community. I've learned a lot as far as how our government is structured, how it operates and everything, and the, I would say, the wheels of government move very slow. Also, I would like to encourage our community. We've been through some things this year and had some disappointments this year, but be encouraged. Those things sometimes can strengthen us. Keep looking forward, keep having hope. Fairfield County has been by no means finished, okay? We are only beginning a new chapter. We just turned the page, beginning a new chapter. Great things are ahead for us, so be encouraged, get ready to work. It's teamwork, so let's just get ready to work, get fired up, get excited. We're still the best county in South Carolina. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else? All right, well, I'll just say at this time, I understand some of the concerns that were raised about the hospital agreement between the county and Fairfield Memorial and Providence. But the fact of the matter is that if the agreement, and those concerns were raised throughout the process, that's why the process took us almost two years, and we had it scheduled on council agendas, and then you saw it disappear a time or two, and we had to go back to the table and kind of draw things up again. But the fact of the matter is that if it weren't for the deal that we have in place and what we have structured, there would be no deal in any year, there'd be no emergency room in Fairfield County. That's the simple fact of it. But I appreciate those concerns and that they were raised, but just hope everyone understands that. I'd just like to echo what Ms. Goins said and tell everyone that we hope you have a good holiday season, and we'll see you after the first two years. We don't see you between now and then. All right, anybody else from council for council time?
One more thing about the 14 acres. The owners of this 14 acres owns the whole partial of property in the gated community and the surrounding community. The partnership of Art Whiston and Tommy Granger are the owners of this property. Creighton Coleman does not have any say-so on this property, so I just want to let you know because of some concerns about Creighton owning the property and giving it to us. If it's not true, he doesn't own it. He doesn't have anything to do with it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Merry Christmas.
All right. We are now down to executive session. We have really just one item for tonight. We already discussed the Esco agreement, so we'll be going to executive session tonight to discuss a legal matter concerning potential litigation against SCANA, S E and G, in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project. We have a motion to go into executive session this time. It's been moved and properly seconded to go into executive session this time for the reason as stated. Those in favor? Those opposed? We're now in executive session. Thank you.